You gotta turn it on earlier, so that you catch all the stuff we said before the meeting officially starts. That's the entertainment part.
That's entertainment, okay.
(laughing)
Okay, we're good.
Okay, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order, because it's after nine o'clock. Do we have any minutes of reports received and filed?
No.
Nope. Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings and events.
We have that meeting with the Central Missouri-
Community Health.
Community Health, today.
Yeah, 1:30.
1:30.
At that. Painting Commission Meeting tonight. Solstice Management District Meeting, Board Meeting tomorrow. Local Foods, Local Places Call, I don't know what's going on with that for sure, guess I'll find out tomorrow. HBA tomorrow night. Board of Directors Chili Cook up Thursday night. GFI's open houses Thursday afternoon.
Yep.
Chiefs Meeting Thursday night.
Yeah, EMS, yeah.
Eastside Coffee Friday morning. Cattlemen's Association Dinner Saturday night. Project Graduation Chicken Dinner Sunday.
And you're gonna get invited to Foreign Bureau's 100th Anniversary Luncheon.
I got that somewhere in my-
They had sent me that, and I couldn't make it, so they wanted to know if either you or Chris could make it, or both could make it, so.
I'll just add it to the list.
Okay.
I got to RSVP in there by the ninth, I think, that was yesterday.
I got Cap Region's Executive Board Meeting tomorrow morning at 7:30, but...
What about KWS on Friday?
I talked to Warren last night, he was thinking it was next Friday.
Okay.
But I'll check with him and see.
Okay, I just, I don't know, I guess I got that as a repeat, I don't know, but, anyway.
It should be next or this Friday, I think, if we-
That's what I thought, that's what I thought, but I'll check with him and see, if not, I can go out and do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Talk about your typing classes.
(laughing) I don't have time for typing classes.
Typing, what's that?
Okay. We got any unfinished business? Nope. New business, Economic Development Discussion, the Vietnam Memorial Moving Wall.
Okay, I put that on there, I had Jill Snodgrass had sent this to me, and this looks like a pretty good, pretty good thing, they were, and I don't, I can't pull it up here yet, but, anyway, I think they're requesting some funding to help out with that, so, just wanted to put this on here and have some discussions as to whether or not we wanted to assist with this.
Isn't it usually the Veterans Commission that brings that in, or is that who's?
The veterans and the VFW, I think, are gonna have a big portion to do with all this, and of course, they'll have to, you know, protect it and have people standing guard around it and stuff, and I think a lot of people will probably come to view it.
They had it last time over on the Capitol grounds, is that, is Capitol grounds again?
Mm-hmm, right.
I thought they were just looking for volunteers for it, they wanted money too?
Well, this was a request for money, yeah, so.
Okay, I didn't see that one.
There, we need to have somebody come make a presentation.
It's fine, we can do that, I just wanted to make you aware of it, I mean, it's not something that we have to act on today.
Yeah.
But-
Did you get the email from Jill?
Yes.
No, I meant Sam.
Oh, Sam.
No, no, I didn't.
Okay, when you get her, your email address?
Yeah.
Or have her write you a note?
Yeah, the wall will be located on the south side lawn of the majestic state capitol.
Yeah.
Majestic State Capitol.
It is. Okay. What is the date on that?
Twenty-four, September 24th through the 28th, and so, you want Jill to come present on that?
Yeah, probably, I think.
Okay. She'll probably be in town in June or something, so.
Okay.
Try to give her, send her a message and have her set up a time to present on that.
Yeah, that's, that is a nice, that is a nice event. Signing of Agreement with Soil and Water Conservation.
Maybe we sign the agreement with soil and water conservation?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Lynn, what were you needing?
Oh, I did not get Jill, I should've turned off her name.
Oh, Jill Snodgrass. She does the Salute to America, she's a-
Your email, you got all that information if you wanna-
Yeah.
She does a lot of events downtown and does not like your stuff.
You forgot to say, "Turn off your phones."
(laughing)
Now I gotta buy breakfast.
Really?
Tomorrow.
Oh.
We're done.
Yeah, we're at it.
I was thinking happy hour would be better, but...
(laughing) Okay.
Tomorrow morning, I'm gonna tell you I'm buying breakfast tomorrow too, we'll see how long this goes.
Okay, discussion of Intristik, Carp, and DevNet and Bridge between the two software vendors.
CS.
Yeah.
I've gotta hear that, I'd love to share whatever.
Sure.
If we need to call Debbie, if we need to call DevNet?
Sure.
Okay.
Let's just wait a minute and see where we go here. Sorry, Sam, don't mean to trump you there.
I thought it would be helpful, everybody kind of understood what the bridge was. Being mysterious.
Thank you.
It's that bottom number down there.
I kinda need to go through this, explain it a little bit.
Hold on a second.
Did you want one?
Go ahead.
I just did my two things going.
Right.
I can't keep track of all barrels.
Do that.
Oh.
That's all right, I just wanted to make sure Jill had looked at it.
Yeah, I counted on Jill a lot, too.
Go ahead, or, go ahead.
Can I start?
Yes, yes, please.
How long can I talk? Well, I mean, I need to know whether I need to move through this real fast, or just fast?
Brief synopsis, yeah, if you would, I don't think we wanna get too far in the weeds, but, anyway.
Well, it's important to understand-
Okay.
-how the bridge works, in order to determine where the problems lie. Basically, on page one, excuse me, I've been having subluxated ribs, they call it.
Okay.
And I've got a little rib pain, and sometimes it's hard for me to breathe, and my voice gets shaky. But, anyway, the bridge is just a way for the two systems, the assessor and the collector, to communicate, and it's basically a two-step process. The first step, when the assessor makes a change, he writes records, a header record and some detail records, to a database, and that's the end of what the assessor does. The step two is the collector reads the header and the detail records, processes them, and, from what I understand, they call that posting the changes. And the collector system has an option to post those changes automatically, or to require human intervention. And I believe currently, Larry, maybe I'm wrong, but, you guys, when we make a change, you have to, you have to physically post those changes, right?
No.
It does it automatically? Okay, I wasn't sure how yours said it, 'cause they've got some of their clients done differently. So, let's go to page two, this is a simple example of adding a vehicle in the assessor's office. So, if a taxpayer comes in and needs to add a vehicle, and this is gonna affect the collector's files, the header record, by the way, the last two pages shows the complete layout of the header and the detail, I don't give you every field, just the ones that are pertinent. But the header record has an order ID, this is important, the order IDs are sequential, every time the assessor makes a change, that increments by one, it's important to keep that straight. It has the owner ID, tax year, the date, this is the old total assessed for the, for the owner, the new assessed, whether or not there's a late flag, and what the penalty amount is. So, the header record basically refers to the owner. The detail refers to all the individual items. In this case, the detail says this is associated with Order 16407, the same as the header. The change type is A for add, it can also be D for delete, or C for change. Since it's an add, the original property type, an ID, vehicle ID, property year, description, value, those are all zero, because we're adding a vehicle. The new property type shows it's a vehicle, it has an ID, each item, each personal property item has a unique ID. The state vehicle ID is the code that the assessor uses to establish the value, it also gives the year, the description, and the new value. So that's a very simple example of what gets written to those files when the assessor adds a vehicle. Example two is very similar, this is what happens when they delete a vehicle. The header record's basically the same, but you'll notice this time, the assessed value's going down, and the original property type shows the information for the vehicle, and the new is blank, 'cause it's been deleted. On example three, on page three, this is an example of what happens if you change a vehicle, the header record's still the same, but in the detail, the change type is a C, and you'll see the original prop, uh, property information, and the new property information. In this case, you'll look at the year, the year's been changed from a 2008 to a 2007, and the value's gone from 38.50 to 35.50. Everybody with me so far?
Yep.
Example four, on page four, is an example of adding, deleting, and changing a vehicle on the same order. You have one header record with the order, uh, order ID, and then-
I'm gonna tell them what's happening, what causes that.
What?
To add, change, delete on the same.
Well, it could be any combination, a tax, you never know what a taxpayer's gonna need to do.
Okay.
So, in this case, we have one header record and three detail records. Each detail record, on the first one, we're deleting, the change type D, on the next one, we're adding, change type A, on the next one, we're changing. Okay? How many can there be? On example four? Well, on the first detail, they deleted a 2008 Acura TSX four-door. On the second one, they added a 1995 Chevy Nova two-door, and then on the third one, they changed a Ford Escort from a 1998, having a value of 950, to a 1997, having a value of 850. So it involved three different vehicles, but theoretically, it could be any number. If they were to add 100 vehicles, there would be 100 detail records. Okay? Now, here's where I start, on page five, is the common problems we've had. First common problem, which isn't so much of a problem anymore, is the assessor changes an item, but the collector can't find a matching item. For instance, on this example, it says, "Change this bass boat from a 1998 to a 1997, and change the property value from 950 to 850," but, for some reason, the collector can't find a bass boat 16 foot.
There was a problem with the feet, because-
Yes, I was gonna mention that.
-you had FT, and DevNet had the feet mark, so that was where that, sort of that problem was.
Well, that's the other-
Identify whether it was FT for feet, or two slashes for feet.
In our system, we can put special characters in our descriptions, and in fact, we do. We have percent signs, we have apostrophes, meaning feet, we have at. Sometimes they put a vehicle at 5% or reciprocity or something. Well, when I started passing them over to DevNet, they said, "Wait, our system can't handle at's, percents, tick marks," and they asked me, when I send those items on the bridge, and in the annual export, to replace them with other characters. Now, I don't know why they can't deal with those, but I've done that on my part, and this problem doesn't really occur very much anymore.
They, they can't use the apostrophes, 'cause it does something different in their system.
I don't understand that.
Something else in their system.
That's a problem with-
From a programmer's standpoint, it makes no sense to me.
Correct.
But I did it at their request.
Well, there's where you're, the issue was, you have to do what fits our system.
Ben, I did, I changed my tick marks to FT.
Well, you make it sound like it's our fault, it's not.
Well, like I said, I don't understand why they can't accept-
Chris said that everything would be seamless, and it would, and it would fit into DevNet's system. That you would do that.
I never said it would fit into DevNet's system, I said that we would work together on this, so that we would be able to create a bridge that worked. Now, we've got, it takes both companies working together to make changes to get this to work, it can't just be one side making all the changes to get the other side to work.
Chris, the statutes allow-
Yeah, hold on, hold on.
Can I finish what I gotta say, then you guys can do get out of the room?
No.
Because there are different things, that apostrophe means different things, you put-
Well, I know what the problem is. It has to do with sequel-
But you said this one's not so much a problem anymore.
Not, it can be handled.
You agree, Larry?
It is, correct.
Yes.
This one's, okay, well, let's move on to another one then.
Okay, so-
We'll try to get them both working together.
There's a simple solution to this problem, and that's, instead of matching vehicles on a description, each vehicle, as I mentioned, has a unique property ID, and so, if we were to match on property ID, then the tick marks and all that would, would be irrelevant. I mentioned this to DevNet's representative at another meeting, and his response was, "That's not the way it was designed, and we're not gonna change it now," so.
If we're gonna sit here and criticize DevNet, then get Jody on the phone.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
So-
We're not gonna have a one-sided presentation here.
No, I'm just saying that that would fix that problem, but I suggested that, and it didn't fly.
Get him on the phone, if they're gonna sit here and bash him.
Yeah, and we need to have DevNet come in and sit down with them and go over this.
Probably not a bad idea to get all the people present to find out what the-
Because having them on the phone is good, but we might do better just to sit down and say, "Okay, here's the problems we're having, what can we do to rectify them?"
That's why we're here.
Thank you for calling DevNet Incorporated, this call may be monitored and recorded for quality assurance purposes. If you are called for support, call toll-free 4664-DevNet.
Yeah.
Is there gonna stay there?
This is Jody, can I help you?
Jody, this is Larry, and we're in the commission meeting with the assessor's office, and Dave Sabbath from Intrinsicor, and Ed-
Fisher.
Fisher from Intrinsicor, and they're discussing the bridge process, and some of the suggestions that they have, or going through how the actual process goes, and just wanted you to be able to listen to their comments, and make any comments that you felt were appropriate or explanatory.
Okay, good morning, everybody.
Good morning, everybody. Everybody here, the commission's here, and the meeting, it's an official meeting, so, it's being recorded, so watch what you say and be nice to us.
(laughing)
So, just to let you know.
Jody, what I'm trying to do is kind of explain what the bridge is, and I'm, uh, got some examples that I'm going over. So, another common problem we had was, let's say, a taxpayer has two 1907, 1967 Ford Mustang convertibles. The assessor would delete one, and they would send over the header record and the detail records as shown, saying to delete a 1967 Ford Mustang CV. Now, this may have been fixed, but what has been happening is, on the step two of the bridge, all of the 1967 Ford Mustang CVs were deleted, not just one, but everyone on the list.
For that particular account, that's correct, that was an issue.
So, I, so I wanna stop you here, so, how does that happen when that property has a specific ID?
Well, it's because they're matching on, on description, and I assume they're issuing commands such as, "Delete from record where description equals Ford Mustang CV."
But-
They're not doing just the one ID?
The, the order number, and the property ID, and the state vehicle are-
Well, the property ID is not being used currently.
Okay.
That, this again, if we did match on property ID, it would eliminate this problem.
Okay.
And I believe that's what we're doing currently.
Although, I'm glad to hear that.
Okay.
So, that's what we're doing currently, we couldn't do it originally, because we didn't have matching property IDs between the two systems in the original conversion of the data.
Okay.
So, for example, in the assessor's office, when they converted it over to the new personal property system, their ID didn't match the ID that we had from the old AS400 system.
Okay.
So, we couldn't match it up off ID, so we had to match up the value and the description and the year.
Okay.
So, this is not a problem anymore?
I don't believe so, but I'll double-check.
Okay.
Common problem number three, multiple changes. This is, happens, and unfortunately, there's not a good way to eliminate this, because in our system, when the taxpayer comes in and states that they need to make changes on their account, when, when the assessor clerk says, "Okay, everything's done," they say, "Finished," and when they say "finished," it writes these bridge records, okay? Now, if the taxpayer comes back one minute later and says, "Oh, I forgot to tell you something," that bridge record's already sent, so they have to make another change and send another bridge record. And so, in this example, the taxpayer says he forgot to put a 1996 Chevy Malibu on his assessment, the assessor makes a change, the taxpayer goes out the door, then the taxpayer comes back in one minute later, says he told him wrong, it's a 97, not a 96.
So, are you saying that we're creating another record in the database every time we make a change?
Every time the assessor clerk says, "I'm finished with this change."
So, every time, so for every order, order number, basically, is what it is, it's an order ID?
Yeah, it's an order ID.
So, for every time we change it, we're creating another record?
No, you're creating- I'm creating a bridge record.
Yeah, not, not another account record.
I'm talking about another item in the database, I mean, we're not changing that item in the database.
What we do is, if, when, well, let's just go through this example, when the guy came in and said he forgot to put a 96 Chevy Malibu, then when the assessor makes that change and says, "Finished," it writes the first header record, and it'll say, "Order ID 16407," and it has the info there, and if you look at the detail record for 16407, it says, "Add a 96 Chevy Malibu." That's the end of that order, okay? Now, when he comes back in and says, "It was supposed to be a 7, a 97," then we do another order.
Right.
And that's Order ID 16408, and if you look at the detail record for that, it says, "Change the 96 Malibu to a 97 Malibu." Now, these have to be processed in Order ID sequence, you can't do the, you can't change the Chevy Malibu before it's added.
Right.
See, and I think-
Is that why we get six bills sometimes?
That's, I think that's what's happening.
Because it's not a bill?
Well, I don't know about that, but if they're not done in order, it's not gonna work.
And within the procedure, once we get the information into the correction tables, the tables that we get from Dave, Dave's populating tables on our side of it, with the information from his system, then what we do is, we use the, we use the SQL Server background then to take a process through this correction, or do the actual work that an individual typically would do, which is then put it into our tables where it needs to be. Some things that have been done to, as David said, those gotta be processed in order by order ID, and that is very true. We used to have the timing on the store procedure that we had set up within the system to fire off like every 30 seconds, to check to see if there's something new out there for us to update and change and modify and correct. We bumped that time up a little bit, so there's a little bit more time between those corrections, so that the corrections can be processed appropriately.
Good.
So, I thought, I thought you said that, I mean, how can something be put in there without the proper order ID, because you had said-
Cannot.
So, then where's the problem come?
The problem, I'm, I'm not sure where the problem comes, other than I know they're still having troubles with multiple changes.
Multiple order IDs, or?
Multiple order IDs.
But I thought you said that the program automatically changed that order ID-
On my end.
On your end, but not on their end.
I, I don't know what happens on their end, but I know from Larry that he says they're still having troubles with multiple changes on the same account.
I just, I mean, I, I mean, it just doesn't make sense.
We're talking about some of the recent history, Dave, that's occurred, and this is something that Kara called into us last week, and maybe this will, maybe this is some of the issue that's going on, you know, we had gotten through the bridge, two corrections for one account, one for a 2013 account year, and one for a 2014 account year. The one for the 2013 account year looked absolutely fine, there was nothing wrong with it whatsoever. The one for the 2014 account year was a total of $3.40, which was just a clerk fee, and then interest on a clerk fee, because of the timing of when it went into the system. Now, I'm not sure if that's part of what Larry's referring to as well, I'm pretty certain that it's part of it, that's for sure, but why would we just get a, a 2014 correction for just three hours, I'm not sure why that would occur.
When I talked to the assessor's office, they had forgotten to add the vehicle. So I think some of it is user error when entering corrections, and we're trying to process these and understand what we're getting on our end, and we can't see anything on your end, and so we're guessing and trying to help the taxpayer, so I get a bill for $3.40. Now, if I would've collected that, when they came to the office, they would've been out the door, gotten all the way to Department of Revenue, and still not had the vehicle on their 14 receipt.
Did you call us on it?
Yeah, we had it fixed, I had to add the vehicle.
Well, you're never gonna have user error, it, user error is something that's gonna exist, nobody's gonna be perfect, there are gonna be occasional mistakes.
But the, the issue is, when we have to make those changes, and we're not supposed to do-
So, did the assessor then not add the vehicle in another order ID?
No, they did have to, on that one, yeah, I didn't have to add it, but I have had to add several corrections, and I can pull an audit trail from DevNet, I'm sure, and see how many corrections I've had to do.
Well, this raises a curious point, because several months ago, when we had a meeting, I asked that I be informed personally any time there was a problem with the bridge, and no one's gotten ahold of me for a long time.
Well, you need to talk to his office.
In, in our system, we can look at these bridge records, I have a function in this, any, and I, I can bring up any order that's ever been done, and see what was written on the bridge record. It's part of our system, we can view these bridge records.
So, why we're still having problems, as opposed to just the user errors, 'cause right now, there are user errors.
We have a problem with the addresses. They enter them with, they still enter them as last name, comma, two spaces.
You're talking about names?
Yes.
I'm going to cover that here in a minute.
And that creates a big problem on our end.
Clerk fees is another issue. Clerk fees can be added and they can be removed. For example, one, this is a case where someone changed their vehicle. The header record says clerk fee no, clerk fee amount zero. So, in that order, there was no clerk fee change. Example two, the assessor changes the clerk fee, then removes it. When that happens, two orders are created. One says clerk fee yes, three dollars. The other one says clerk fee yes, minus three dollars. And this was by agreement between our company and DevNet on how to handle these clerk fees. And if they're still causing a problem, I'm not sure why, and I'd be glad to do anything I can do to, to help that, but...
Is that a problem? Well, as of last week, we still had an issue with the one Kara was talking about. I mean, they have been an ongoing problem up till just recently, so that...
But I haven't changed anything on mine.
Maybe, I don't know that it's completely fixed, or...
Another issue is names. The assessor stores their names as name and name two. That's it. And there's some examples below that of the types of things that are in the assessor's name fields. Now, what Larry wants is first name, last name, and middle initial.
That's what we need for DevNet, or that's what Larry wants?
Well, I, I work with other DevNet counties that this is, they don't ask for it that way. So, I don't know if it's a DevNet issue or just something they've done with Larry and his office.
We, we want it that way. We want it, it's fields. It's not just last name, first name. It's name, then you tab to the next field, and you put in, put in the name. It's all in fields instead of using the comma like the AS400 was. In the AS400, you did the last name, comma, two spaces, and the first name.
Okay.
And then it was different for DBAs. Well, in this, you have fields for the DBA. You have fields for the last name, fields for the first name, field for the middle initial. And, and a lot of that is because that's what everybody's system, system is going to in this day and...
Who, who else does that? I don't know of anyone.
Any, any program I've ever gone into, the fields are that way. There are fields for the names.
I don't know of any assessor's office that stores their name in it.
I'm not...
And it's separate field today?
They, they all have just two, you know, two fields. There, there's no first name, last name, middle initial.
That makes it very hard for us to find real estate property, business property.
There's a number of different clients within the county, within the state of Missouri that store fields that way, either they're using intrinsic or they're using other software available to them. If they're using intrinsic, yes, of course, you've got name one, name two. Here's, it's usually the county's preference as to how the information gets stored into our system and what's available based upon what we're getting from the assessor's office. The benefits of using individual main fields in terms of first name, last name, middle initial, suffix, prefix, all of those things that are available, there's benefits to the county, and basically what it comes down to is your mailings. So, when you do your tax bill mailings and you do a mail sort, or when you do a mail pre-sort or something along those lines, or you do a name verification, because the United States Postal Service that has software that they give out to or sell to these printing companies, which allows them to do name and address verification on properties to ensure a better success of getting the mail delivered versus getting mail delivered back to the county as returned on, on return, nobody leaving bad address, or bad addresses for that example. What typically that gives them the ability to do that is get a better rate overall on their mailing. So, we've got it in our table, separated it all out based upon the different segregation between first name, last name, middle initial, so forth and so forth. Address one, address two, city, state, zip, zip plus four. There's different fields available out there for that, but those are some of the things as to why different jurisdictions do it that way and having things broken out. And there are a number of them in, in, in the state of Missouri that do have it that way. Dave, that's probably where I would disagree with you.
Well, I didn't say there weren't any. I just said I didn't know of any. I believe you, Jody. But how would I do the first one there? Cheryl R. Nudal, name one.
Well, he doesn't have that to look at.
No, Brian Charles Freeburg, name two. What's the last name?
I'm sorry?
He doesn't know what your last name is.
So, he's...
Name one, name one's...
Yeah.
Okay, um, name, the name field says Cheryl R. Nudal, and name two says Brian Charles Freeburg.
Now, is it a real estate parcel or a personal property?
This is personal property.
With two...
Personal property?
Yes.
Two people on the title, right?
Do you have one personal property account?
Yes, quite a few examples.
Okay, well, in our, in our, in our system, then you would have two name records.
So, we could find it under both?
You have two owner name records on our system, then.
So, how do I do that on the bridge?
I'd have to look at the bridge and try to figure out some way for you to accomplish that.
Okay. Another, by going with middle initial, we're actually going to lose information, because I looked through some, I don't have an example here, but I found some where we would have like Smith, comma, Aaron Ray. Well, if I turn that into last name Smith, first name Aaron, middle initial R, I don't know that he's Ray anymore. Maybe he's got a brother that's got a different middle name that has the same first and middle initial.
But doesn't, doesn't he have an ID that recognizes him personally?
Yes. But when you go to look him up on the, to look him up, it's not, it's not serving his, it's not saving his full middle name.
So, I, I get what you're saying, but, so I, I, I pull up that guy. Doesn't it tell me his address and everything else?
Sure. At first, you got to pull up that guy.
Well, I realize that, but, so how many Aaron R. Smiths are there going to be? I mean, I mean, I could say there's, what if there's ten? I mean, so we have to go through and we have to find out who, which one that is, right?
Be verified by address and vehicles if that's the case.
Yeah.
It's, it's not a big issue. I'm just saying that...
Right.
We're actually losing data by going to a middle initial rather than storing the full middle name.
How, I don't, I don't see that.
Because we, we no longer have his full middle name.
But we're not losing data. We're just, we have to find him in other ways.
You get people that have names like J. period Dale Smith.
But there's a lot of accounts that you guys add that don't have any middle initial, so it's not that pertinent, I don't know.
Well, there's examples of this. Some people use initial for their first name.
Well, that's, that's not a, that's not a proper record, though. I mean, if his, if his first name is J...
His name is what he says it is.
No, it's not.
No, I mean, his name may be James.
The thing that they legally use.
Well, but his legal name has to be, if J's got to stand for something, so that has to go in there. I mean, and when he says, well, my, my first name is J., period, no, it's not. What is your first name? Anyway, I mean, yeah.
Anyway, this, this, I'm, I'm willing to do what, and I, and, and what I do on the bridge is when the name is a last name and a first name, then on the bridge, I will break it into first name, last name, middle initial. When it doesn't conform, then on the bridge, I just put it in straight into owner name one and owner name two. Some of these examples don't even have a name, like Everest LLC, DBA, Everest Cafe and Bar. Though, that would go in to the name one and name two field on the bridge, because there is no last name. It's a company name.
So, we don't, we don't have a field for company name?
In the assessor's data, it's, it's just, doesn't matter if it's a company or a person.
We have a DBA.
That's why we use the name one and name two.
I see.
Because it'll...
Either, either way, okay.
No, it does matter on the collector's system. They have a field that says this is an organization.
Right, and we can just click organization and search business names, and it would pop up.
Now, on the scheme we use, if I were to type in, if I searched by Everest, it would find this record. I wouldn't have to tell it it was a business. If there was someone's name that had Everest in it, it would also find that record. You know, my point is that if we're having problems with the name, I'm, I'll do what I can to, to format it the way you want it on the bridge, and I've done that according to the instructions that I've received so far. If there's other things you want me to do, I'd be glad to do it. Well, but I do know the assessor is not wanting to go to the, to this...
Fields.
More broken out fields, yes.
Just because they don't want to hit tab or...
No.
That'll be something that, that we discuss. I know that Jackie had some specific items that she wanted to chirk away when she was a property manager, but Alvin is there now, so we'll talk and see what the reason is we're doing it the way we're doing it and work from there. But this is the way the AS400 was set up. Is that correct?
Yes. Now, when it comes to real estate, the name has to be what it is on the deed.
And that actually presents another problem for us, because we have names in real estate, same owners, but different, their name is different in personal property.
Different?
But the deed has to read exactly as the deed reads.
On your system or on ours?
In yours, which comes across that way on ours. They use their legal first name on the real estate, because it has to be how the deed is, and they use their nickname or whatever the hell they want on the personal property.
I can see that.
And that causes...
You don't know it's the same person.
Right, and, and that presents issues, again, with mailing, trying to combine mailings for savings of money.
Well, I have two real estate parcels in Boone County. One of them says David C. and Carla E. Sabbath, and one of them says David Sabbath. And that's how I legally took that.
Now, if I'm not mistaken, Larry, just as a kind of a, some more of a background on the, the major issue you guys were having, if I remember correctly, on the tax bills, because you were actually combining the bills and the personal property return forms...
Correct.
In the same envelopes. That's pretty much the only way that your printing company had to try to match up information.
It has to match by name and address.
Was based upon a, a perfect match of name and address.
That's correct.
And what do you do with et l? A lot of real estate will say Joe Sues Cindy something et l.
It has to match perfect for the mailing service.
At all, and others.
Well, they're, I, I'm...
These are sort of problems with the nature of the beast, and you're not going to get...
They're not going to solve all of them, but a lot of them could be solved.
Like I said, I'm willing to do anything you suggest.
It sounds to me like we're really close, and there's a few little issues that we need to work out, and we need to compromise a little bit. I, I can see where maybe we need to add a couple more fields on the intrinsic core side, and I'm not trying to pick on you guys, but anyway, if, if that's going to help, I mean, if we could do that, that might be great. I mean, as we transfer over to Windows-based, and I assume, is all this Windows-based and ready to go? I mean, I would assume that that's all pretty easy to add fields. I mean, it might, might create more problems. I don't know, but...
We'll look into the reason that it's done the way it is and then see, you know, if they, if a personal property people tell me that there's a problem it presents, then we'll see what we can do to mitigate that and to get something that works together.
Right.
Well, the majority of the time, it's working.
Majority of the time?
It's, it's working.
Yeah, we're, we're talking, you know, we've got thirty-four thousand real estate parcels, thirty-five thousand personal property parcels, and the majority of those, I mean, ninety-nine percent are running good. It's just the few that we have problems with. Now, some of that is user error, where we entered something incorrectly. Some of it is where a taxpayer will come in and tell us one thing, and then go to revenue, and revenue says, well, this doesn't match your record here, and have to come back, and we'll have to change it. And it, so it says something else, or is exactly as the title reads. That kind of stuff's going to happen. I mean, there's, there's no way to completely eliminate all of that. But, but I feel it's, it's a two-way street here. Both sides have to work on this to reach a good situation that works for everybody.
I think we're going to put a little more pressure on intrinsic corp, though, because DevNet offered at no cost to give us a personal property. If there was a cost associated with it, then Larry even volunteered from the tax maintenance fund to pay for it. We were guaranteed that there would be no hiccups with the bridge, that it would be real time. So, we need to get to that point now.
Every example that's been cited to me where there was a problem was, when I look at the bridge records, they're exactly right. There's what, I didn't, I don't know what I can do to, to make it any different.
Part of it may have just been communication. Maybe you don't know about it. I don't know, but it sounds like some of them have been taken care of, so that's, I think I agree with. Most of everything's been said. We keep working together on it, but kind of losing communication somewhere along, and people are getting a little busy about it, so. But like I said, I'm going to put more pressure on you, Dave, because when we did this, we were...
Sure.
That was part of the deal, was we were going to...
We'll do everything that we can.
Well, I can see a little incentive on the other side to, to continue to have problems under that scenario, because if we continue to have problems, then we get thrown out.
No, we're not saying that's what's going on, but there would be the incentive there to do that.
Right, so...
Let's just try to keep the communication open and try to...
Hey, I don't care if we throw them both out, if, if we got on the same system.
Well, we have a collector's system too, Larry. You could buy art.
You didn't offer the, you didn't offer near the, the things that they did. It would lose them, Sam.
Yeah. We're going to play mace. We're going to play mace. We're, we just...
Larry, I'm still hearing all. I can't hear you talking.
I'll try to reel them in for you. I'll send you flowers tomorrow, Dave.
No, wait, let's, let's, let's sit down. Let's try to work this out.
Everybody good, Dennis?
I'm, I've been really long. I'm willing to change anything on my side of the bridge. All it's going to take is for some Jody, Jody more specifically, he's more technically, if he were to tell me, we need to change something that you're doing on step one of the bridge, I would do it immediately. I, I haven't been reluctant to make changes. But like I say, in the last few months, I haven't heard boo from anybody. All I hear is, oh, it's just not working right.
So, while we're here...
And I say, well, what's, now, every, everyone I looked at, it looked like my side was fine. And, and so if something's not working right, I'm not sure what I can do about it.
Well, again, you need to talk to the people on your personal property side to notify you when they're up home, because when they come to our office, I don't feel like I need to call you. I need to talk to the assessor, and they need to contact you. You aren't their software company.
And in addition, several times, the changes they make, and there's an error, they tell us they can't fix it. We have to fix it on our side.
Well, that's because, and I'm, I'm aware of that, because sometimes they would go in there and try to fix problems and cause more problems. And it, and if I look on the bridge and that all of my side of the bridge, the export files look correct, then I don't want them going in there and...
So, if they have a problem, should they contact you?
Yes, so I can at least...
Be assessed.
If there's something that we've done, that I can do it.
I would request if we have serious problems, that they should be documented, and the assessor should be notified at least, so I can notify Dave.
Okay.
Something that we're talking about that is, is a continuing serious problem, not, not a user error that happens every now and then, like with the...
Well, it's the user errors that we have to fix.
Well, I'd like to address, what do you mean by a user error?
And I understand, everybody makes errors. That's not the issue, but the statutes clearly say, I'm not...
The assessor types in a wrong number. I agree, that's an error, but the bridge still goes over...
And the auditors, the outside auditors and the state auditor said, the, the collector is not to make changes to records, but we have to.
I have a whole, there's a whole list of accounts that I've had to go into the assessor module and change. I should not be doing that.
The assessor module on your system, not on our system.
They know. That's what you guys are not understanding.
On your system, not our system.
Yes, that's correct.
But your girls know that those problems are out there and exist, and if they're not notifying you, they're...
Will you send me a list of what the problems are?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm...
That way, I'm...
The accounts that I have had to fix? The accounts that I have had to fix.
Yeah, the ones that, so I can specifically address each one of those.
Sure.
You got some direction then?
I hope.
That's better than it was. It was worse than this a year ago.
I suggest we.
Larry, I mean, I'm not trying to interject any additional information, but I, Larry, when you and I had spoke earlier, you were mentioning something about the end of the year files as well. And I'm not sure, I recall we had, in the first year, yeah, we had some issues in the first year when we did that, that update. But then last year, we have residual issues from last, the last problem that we had in last year's tax bills from the transfer over and that, for the updates.
There was around twenty that didn't, I think that didn't transfer at all. That we, and, and we were, didn't become aware of those until December. Sometime in December. And that's when they got added into our system.
And I had to make those changes.
And we're, I mean, I'm concerned when that rolls around again next year. Dave came down and, and went through those with us.
Well, Dave, when did our system go operational? The.
For personal property?
For twenty thirteen.
Thirteen.
For the twenty thirteen year? So we're in the second year of it now, right?
Well, we've gone through thirteen, fourteen, and we're getting ready to do fifteen. Now, last year, I mean, there's two ways to do this annual thing. You, you have to get a full data dump for Form 11, to understand. Now, last year, when we started the process, I, I thought everyone's understanding was that we would give a full data dump for Form 11 and then a refresh data dump in September to populate the collector files. But then something changed to where you said, no, you wanted changes sent over for everything since Form 11. And that caused a little issue. This year, and Jody, tell.
Form 11, Dave, or Form 11A?
11A, that's fine. So, um, well, actually it's eleven. There's normally not any personal property changes during the BOE. But, Jody.
There were in our case.
Jody, I just want to make sure that, that we're on the same foothold this year for fifteen.
Sure.
When, I'm going to, I'm going to, once I provide that full, uh, data file for Form 11 or 11A, then I'm going to require court orders from that point forward for any further changes. And you said, if I understand right, I'm just trying to verify this, that, that that would work, that they would spool up out there in the, on your system and then you would apply them once you had balanced your books. Is that correct? That, I'm not going to provide you a, an update. I'm simply going to give you one annual dump at Form 11A and then track all changes from that point forward and, and start sending them on the bridge, even though you won't process them. Or the other option is I give you a refresher dump, uh, at, at September.
Yeah, I think what we didn't, last year for fourteen, didn't we process those in one night?
Yeah, because, uh, I was assuming that we were going to give a full file dump, but we didn't do that last year. You wanted only the changes, so I had to kind of, rather than give you a simple export, I had to process them all as court order changes, which was problematic. I'd, I'd rather, I just want to know how we're going to do it, which way you prefer, so that we don't get confused again this year. Is it all right for me to require court orders after 11A and they will spool up?
We don't really need to have this discussion outside of the.
Yeah, you're right, but the term's coming up here close because we're going to be certifying in May and it's getting to be mid-March. So I want to get this nailed down so that we don't have any.
We're going to be certifying Form 11 in May.
In May.
And that's fine. That, as soon as you certify Form 11 in May, that's fine. You can read it to us and then when you get done with your books and board, then we can, we'll be, as soon as we've done certifying Form 11, or as soon as Form 11 is done, we can discuss further the Form 11A and corrections post that, post that time.
Well, I have to know when to turn it on, on the assessor's side, when to start tracking each individual change. I, I, I mean, that's important.
As soon as you close your books for, for fifteen.
Let's, let's set up a.
Yeah, let's, let's do that. We've got, we've got to keep moving. We got, we, yeah.
Don't go all day. I'm just kidding.
Oh, you don't.
I'm just kidding. Come on, let's go.
Okay.
I'm just kidding.
Well, I hope everybody understands a little bit more about how the bridge works.
Okay. Let's try to work.
Well, you're taking two programs and trying to make them listen to each other and stuff, so I understand there's going to be problems.
But this is common. This is not an unusual situation. We, we work with multiple collector vendors in the state.
It's unusual for us because we can have these problems.
Well, let's try to work it out. Let's try to work it out. This might, this might, this might be a call, we'll sit down, sit down and drink, sit down in my office and sip some.
All right, thank you, Jody. And if you get anything from us or.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
So are we done?
Yeah, we're done.
Thanks, sir. Do we want to get back together and?
So you're going to call a meeting with Jody and me and sit down and ask some of the.
I think, yeah, I think you, you guys.
Come back in thirty days and we'll have.
I, I don't have a problem working with Jody. We work together well.
Okay.
And if you need us to be referees, Sam, I do it. He wants to play nice.
That's going to be a good excuse to sit in my office and drink some.
I think you should charge admission if you do that.
Well, you need an excuse.
Oh. Okay.
Go buy some food.
Okay, okay, okay. What do we got? The first reading of budget adjustment number four. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, this is for fifty-six thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-four cents. It's money from the city on the Greenway on Highway fifty. No action today. We'll take it up in ten days.
Okay.
That was a reimbursement?
Yes. Yeah, we actually got a copy of the check from the city.
Do we have any other business before we go into closed session?
Who's great now? What was John doing? Hey, John?
I don't think he was needing anything.
Were we talking about them?
It wasn't on, it wasn't on the agenda.
Thanks for your time.
Yeah, thank you, Dave.
Ask him real quick and then we'll.
Oh, okay. Okay.
No, I think we need a roll call to go into closed session.
Well, we need a, a motion first. So I move that we go into closed session pursuant to section six, ten, point oh-two-one of the revised statutes of Missouri in regards to contract negotiations, sub twelve.
Second.
Roll call.
Sam?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Hello, Mr. John.
I came up on the wrong grave. I was going to talk to you about doors.
No, uh, when you get them all to the table, the.